Go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I now call the public, I now call this public hearing of the Standing Committee on Social Development to order. My name is Jane Wayall and I'm strong. I am the MLA for Mofe Kletchel Region and Chair of the Standing Committee. At this time, I will ask committee members in the room and online to introduce themselves, starting with to my left.
Karen, as our member for Range Lake, thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon, I'm Shawna Morgan, MLA for Yellowknife North.
Okay, now, online?
Good afternoon, my name is George Neersu, MLA for McKenzie Delta.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, my name is Robert Hawkins, I'm the MLA for Yellowknife Centre. I'm not a member of the Standing Committee on Social Development, but I'm always pleased to join in because of these matters are of great interest to me. And as always, Madam Chair, I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Bill twenty seven, an Act to Amend the Protection Against Family Violence Act, received second reading in the Legislative Assembly on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. Bill twenty seven proposes to amend the Act to improve access to emergency protection orders and to address physical and online harassment. This committee has been tasked with reviewing this bill to see if it is ready to continue on a path to becoming law. That is our role in this process. We do, we did not write this bill, but we are responsible for taking a very close look at it and making sure this bill represents the wants and needs of NWT residents as best as we can. This afternoon, committee will hear from the Honorable Jay McDonald, Minister of Justice, who is remotely joining us today online through Zoom. After that, we will open the floor to any member, to any, any member of the public here today who wish to share their feedback on Bill twenty seven with committee. On behalf of committee, we wish to acknowledge the serious and sensitive nature of this bill and to acknowledge the courage it takes to present to committee on this topic. Committee is grateful for your contributions and wishes to note that a councillor has been made available this afternoon. I now would like to invite the Honorable Jay McDonald, Minister of Justice, to present to committee on Bill twenty seven. When you are ready, please proceed with your remarks and presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair and Committeeing Members, I'd like to start by apologizing for my attire. Unfortunately, I'm casualty of the Air Canada strike and currently stranded in Nova Scotia, so didn't bring my business attire with me for my vacation, so once again, I apologize. Good afternoon, colleagues, I'm here today to speak with you about Bill twenty seven, an Act to Amend the Protection Against Family Violence Act. The Protection Against Family Violence Act provides emergency and long-term protection for victims of family violence. Bill twenty seven seeks to enhance both the protections for families, for victims under the Act, and to ensure access to protection orders for a broader range of family members as defined. The amendments arise from a two thousand twenty-two court decision arising from a review of an emergency protection order as is required under the Act. This combined with the findings in an independent report and the practice in some other jurisdictions prompted the department to identify specific areas that could benefit from legislative amendments at this time. The amendments are consistent with indigenous ways of being and living and with an evolving understanding about persons who can constitute a family. In addition, it is standard with legislative amendments. Bill twenty seven makes the language used throughout the Act more gender inclusive. This concludes my remarks, and I will now provide a presentation, walking through the bill in greater detail, and I will call on my two staff that I have in the room. I have Brad Patzer, the Assistant Deputy Minister, Attorney General, Department of Justice, and Lawrence Pullo, Senior Policy Analyst, Department of Justice, and I'm not sure which one will be leading the presentation. So I'm happy to pass off through you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, please proceed, Mr. Patzer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it'll be Ms. Pullo who will be leading the presentation.
Okay, please proceed.
Good afternoon. I am pleased to be here today to provide this briefing on Bill twenty seven, an Act to Amend the Protection Against Family Violence Act. I will be providing a brief overview on the purpose of the Protection Against Family Violence Act, some information on what led to the proposed targeted amendments to the Act, the steps taken to during the development of the bill, as well as an overview of key aspects contained in the bill itself. The NWT Protection Against Family Violence Act came into force in two thousand and five. The Act provides emergency and long-term protections for victims of family violence. Under the Act, victims can apply for an emergency protection order at any time from a justice of the peace if family violence has occurred or where there is an immediate danger of family violence. Victims can also apply for a protection order, a more long-term order available from the Supreme Court after family violence has occurred. Orders are relatively quick and easy to obtain, allowing the victim and any children to remain in their home and be protected. The Protection Against Family Violence Act sets out a definition of family violence and identifies who can apply for the protections available. Currently, the definition of family violence used in the Act includes the threat of or actions of physical, psychological, emotional, and financial abuse. The Act also provides civil remedies that can be used separate from criminal charges under Canada's Criminal Code. As such, the Act sends the message that violent behaviour is not acceptable. So what led to the changes? In June two thousand and nineteen, the federal government abandoned the Criminal Code to define what constitutes an intimate partner for all criminal code purposes, clarifying that the term includes a current or former spouse, common-law partner, as well as a dating partner. In the NWT, the two thousand and twenty-two ruling on a review of an emergency protection order by Supreme Court Chief Justice Smallwood identified that the Protection Against Family Violence Act provides protections only to certain types of family members or individuals in certain types of intimate relationships. The two parties in the case were in an intimate relationship that did not fit within the limited allowable categories under the Act as they did not live together and their child had not yet been born. Ruling against, in ruling against the emergency protection order, the Chief Justice clarified that once the child in the case was born, the applicant could reapply if the need for protection remained. Another reason for the change is that over the years, as people live ever larger parts of their lives online, stalking, repeated conduct that creates fear for one's safety or the safety of their loved one, and cyber stalking, the use of technologies to facilitate virtual or in-person harm, have become more prevalent. In two thousand and twenty, the YWCA's, YWCA-NWT study on emergency protective, protection orders in the NWT had identified that the Act has no provision to address stalking and recommended exploration of legislation to address this. The Act needed to reflect these changes. Bill twenty seven also lines up with work done under Action eighty-three on emergency protection orders in the GNWT's action plan in response to the calls for justice on missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and two S L G B T Q Q I A plus people. So now we're going over the development of Bill twenty seven, where work began in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. The department conducted a jurisdictional scan in other provinces to develop an understanding of best practices across Canada in two specific areas, namely who may apply for an emergency protection order and the inclusion of any civil protections from stalking. Alberta, Manitoba, Nunavut, and British Columbia have addressed stalking and cyber stalking in their legislation. Alberta, Nunavut, and Saskatchewan include protections for those in care relationships where one person is dependent on another person for assistance in their daily lives. Manitoba, Nunavut, and New Brunswick include protections for those in dating relationships. As the intention was to modernize specific areas of the Act, rather than conduct a comprehensive review, the department conducted targeted engagement with key stakeholders. Letters were sent to Indigenous governments, the YWCA, victim services providers across the NWT, RCMP, the Judiciary, NWT Disabilities Council, Inclusion NWT, the NWT Senior Society, the Arctic Indigenous Wellness Foundation, Native Women's Association of the NWT, the Status of Women Council of the NWT, the Northern Mosaic Network, Foxy, and Smash, and professional organizations in health and mental health. An item was also posted in the Weekly Bulletin of the Law Society. The feedback was received, received was analyzed, considers, and incorporated into Bill twenty seven. So Bill twenty seven, as we will see, proposes four areas of amendment which are listed there, the definition of family members who are covered, definition of stalking and adding stalking to the actions that constitute family violence. And at the request of a victim, allow the RCMP to identify the stalker and share that information with the victim so they can apply for protection under the Act. And finally, establish the new civil recourse for victims of family violence, referred to as the tort of stalking. Tort law is an area of private law that provides compensation for people who have been injured. It has been used by victims elsewhere to help them seek justice against perpetrators. Now, if we look quickly at the detail of the amendments, we will go through the specific amendments in the order of the Act to maintain the flow with the Act. So the first part is an amendment to section one point one, adding a definition of stalking where that causes a person reasonably in the circumstances to fear for their safety and is caught and is carried out electronically or otherwise and knowing that the victim is being harassed or intimidated. And here we have, in section one point two, we have the way the Act is currently, the definition of family violence, which includes intentional and or reckless act that causes bodily harm or damage to property, causing fear for safety, sexual abuse, forcible confinement, psychological abuse, emotional abuse, or financial abuse. This definition remains, and we have added a definition, we're proposing to add a definition for stalking. Just as some other elements of the definition of family violence, this definition incorporates an element of fear to be felt by the person who applies for an emergency protection order or by a child in their care. And so there, there was a, it became necessary to clarify where a person is unable to feel fear and ensure access to protection to these victims also. So section one point three does this. For example, for a child who may not have reached the developmental stage where they would feel fear in a specific situation, or an adult who is not able to feel fear because they have a cognitive disability, dementia, or is otherwise not mentally competent. We then have a new section, one point four, examples of stalking, and this incorporates examples of stalking, which are largely consistent with the prohibitions in section two sixty-four of Canada's Criminal Code and with examples used in family violence legislation in Manitoba and Nunavut for electronic stalking. There we go. Next, Bill twenty seven proposes a repeal and replace of section two point one. Having defined, refined the definition of family violence, we now arrive at who may apply for protections under the Act. So protections are available to married and common-law spouses, parents who have a child together, and parents and grandparents of these people. The Act also currently protects persons in a family who live together. However, these categories are not inclusive of the range of family, the range of families. The two thousand and twenty-two Supreme Court ruling highlighted that currently a parent of an unborn child where the two parents do not live together cannot apply for an emergency protection order. Similarly, only some elders currently can access protections under the Act. For example, an elder could be a sibling rather than a parent of either the respondent or another person currently eligible to apply for an EPO. And if that is the case, this elder could not seek protection under the Act. So here we see what is current and what will be replaced. And before replacing, before clarifying who the various parties are that can apply for protection, we, we have definitions that were developed on the types of relationship that the Act applies to, an approach consistent with the one adopted in Nunavut. The categories of relationships under the new proposed section two point one are care relationships, where one person is dependent on another person for assistance in their daily life activities. This can be a relationship between any persons where care and dependence are involved. However, this would not include an individual and their professional care because a professional would, relationship would fall under other legislation. Dating relationships, as mentioned previously, and family relationships, and here, this could be a relationship between persons who are related, related by blood, such as cousins or siblings, by marriage or by adoption, as well as persons who can be deemed or considered to be related in the circumstances, such as, for example, close friends. So here we have then the grouping of the persons who are eligible to apply for protection, so as before, with the addition of a person who has or had a dating relationship with the respondent, a person who has or had a family relationship with the respondent, and a person who has or had a care relationship with the respondent. Another change proposed in, in Bill twenty seven is that arises from the fact that while the identity of a stalker may be known to a victim, often this may not be the case, especially if the stalking is conducted remotely or electronically. To be able to access protection orders available under the Act, the victim would be able to approach the RCMP for help in identifying the stalker. Note that the RCMP would provide information if the member officer reasonably, reasonably believes that the applicant is in fact being stalked, and if the RCMP can identify the person suspected of stalking. This approach is consistent with that in Nunavut and Manitoba and would allow the RCMP to disclose the name of and any additional information to identify the person suspected of stalking. And finally, Bill twenty seven proposes the tour, the inclusion of a tort of stalking, also as in Nunavut and Manitoba, allowing victims of stalking to pursue their attacker for compensation in civil court under the Act and without proof of damage. Potentially, a victim could pursue their own civil action as well as separate criminal proceedings through prosecution under the federal criminal code. This concludes our review of Bill two, we would be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I will now like to open the floor to members of the public. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to share the feedback on Bill 27? Okay. Emily Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks to the Minister and the Department of Justice staff for being here and for your work on this. I'm first trying to understand sort of how we got here, or the rationale that led to these changes being proposed in the bill. I know you've pointed to the 2022 Supreme Court case, and I think I'm familiar with the one you're referring to. And in that case, you know, Justice Smallwood decided that, you know, an emergency protection order was not the appropriate mechanism in that particular situation with the people in that relationship. But I'm not aware that the justice recommended that it should apply, or that there was a problem with the law somehow. So I'm curious to know how the department decided that, as a result of that case, there was a problem with the legislation that needed to be changed. And I'll just give some context there in the sense that, you know, the Protection Against Family Violence Act tries to deal with specific situations of family violence that are different from other general situations of violence that are experienced, you know, by people in society, by providing, you know, extraordinary remedies to help protect people, emergency protection orders, protection orders that, you know, don't require notice to someone, can be done very quickly, can be done by a justice of the peace. And so, you know, take away some of the rights that people would normally experience, you know, the right to be notified when there's, you know, allegation of this kind being brought against them, because someone is in imminent danger of, you know, due to a person, for example, that lives with them, or they're in danger of not being able to live safely in their homes, so therefore, these extraordinary remedies are needed. So the changes, for example, to expanding the definition of who's eligible or what counts as family violence, I think needs to be made very carefully if we're to apply these extraordinary remedies, you know, broader and broader spheres of people in different kinds of relationships. For example, if it's to apply to family members who don't live together, or people who have dated casually but are not living together and don't, you know, don't perhaps experience that sort of day-to-day situations of confronting each other in fear. So I'm wondering if the department can explain, first, how that 2022 case was interpreted to mean that these changes are needed, and some sort of further explanation of why the need to expand the sphere so broadly, for example, to any family member or anyone who has been in a dating relationship? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Emily Morgan, Minister of Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the key pieces of the changes to Bill 27 was to, certainly to modernize it, and I think that part of that work involved was generated from the case in 2022 and from some of the work done by our neighboring jurisdictions. But I will happily pass this off to Ms. Poule for, or Mr. Patzer, I'm not sure which one would prefer to answer for a more detailed explanation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think part of the response to the question is that, as I understand the case in 2022, there was a protection order that was issued by the Justice of the Peace. So the Justice of the Peace certainly felt that there was an element of family violence occurring in that particular situation. And when the matter went to the Supreme Court for review, there was really a, it was a technical issue as to whether the Act provided the court with jurisdiction to issue that family violence, or to issue the protection order in response to the family violence that existed because, A, there was an unborn child, so the Act didn't apply, and B, the partners didn't, the dating partners didn't reside together. So it really prevented the court from having jurisdiction in that particular circumstance. And as the minister also indicated, upon our review of the various jurisdictions that do have similar legislation, there seemed to be an expansive application of the concept of family that has been pursued in other jurisdictions to reflect the modern society and the relationships that exist within the family in modern society. I don't know if Ms. Poule has anything to add to that response or not, but I will leave it there, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Poule?
Yeah, I think it's exactly what was said. It was both respecting the range of the way families live together traditionally, where it might be cousins or, you know, different kinds of relationships that were not covered, and the way modern families live. So both of those were meant to be, were recognized and are proposed to be included. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Emily Morgan, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my understanding of Justice Smallwood's decision in 2022 was that the justice pointed out that even though in her view, an emergency protection order wasn't, or shouldn't apply in that situation according to the law, there were other remedies available to that person. You can obtain a restraining order, you can obtain a peace bond, and that, those options are still available. So my question is, in the case, for example, where people are not living together, but would be, you know, included under the proposed bill and the changes, why wouldn't it be sufficient that those people have access to applying for a restraining order or a peace bond? Why do they need to be included within the family violence definition to be eligible for, like, say, emergency protection orders? Can you explain why, like, other kinds of remedies that already exist are not good enough? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll pass to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer for the response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think generally speaking, there is a desire to treat all family members the same and not distinguish between what some family members might have access to in terms of protection orders versus other family members, just because of the difference in the particular relationship within a particular family. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Testart, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. The Northwest Territories suffers from some of the worst rates of independent partner violence in Canada, and steps taken to curb those abuses are much appreciated by my constituents and certainly by myself. And I think expanding the definition, or expanding the range of behaviors that can be subject to an EPO, and also the different, or expanding the relationships to reflect the uniqueness or the makeup of the North, because of course, we have, I think, the more common law relationships in the NWT than most places in Canada per capita. So that being said, I did want to ask about the dating, sorry, the Clause 3, under the definitions of dating relationship. It is a dating relationship of some permanence. That's maybe unfamiliar language to myself, but I'm not a lawyer or a drafter. Has this been, does this have clear meaning to a court and to our courts? Are there, has it been tested before in another jurisdiction? And is there enough kind of jurisprudence to govern this? If it does, if there is an argument over definitions? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll pass that to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer, please. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not know off the top of my head whether that language is, does exist in other jurisdictions, but I can say that it would be up to the court to provide an interpretation of whether that particular relationship was of some permanence or not, and that would be subject to argument. I don't know whether Ms. Poule actually has information about whether that language is used in other pieces of legislation of similar nature in other jurisdictions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Poule?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did look at the wording in various jurisdictions, and also wording in other NWT legislation in working with the Legislation Division. I don't have more information here, but we could look at that again with, at the Minister's discretion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Emily Testart, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. And I would appreciate, yeah, any additional information the minister can provide, because we don't want to be in a situation where courts are wondering what this means, or there's a whole lot of arguments over where the range of, you know, obviously, if you have one date with someone, that probably doesn't, that's probably reasonable to assume that's not permanence. But what is permanence? What is the threshold of that? And I think we need to have a clear understanding of that, or at least what the drafter's thinking is in what this means practically in a court setting. So as this is going to greatly expand the range of who can use this tool, and presumably provide more protections to Northerners who are experiencing this kind of violence, are there enough policing resources to handle the expansion of EPOs? And I'm thinking particularly in smaller communities that may lack a detachment, or even those that do have a detachment. If we're seeing an influx of who can apply for these orders, and it's easier to get them, do we have the resources to ensure they're enforced and maintained? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, excuse me, pass to Deputy Minister Pat, Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Policing resources are always an issue in the Northwest Territories, Madam Chair, but given the discrete amendments to this particular piece of legislation, I don't imagine there would be a, we would experience a significant increase in the number of protection orders that are brought before the court. These are really targeted amendments that were looking to fill some fairly narrow but important gaps in the legislation as it currently existed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, do you have a question? MLA Hawkins?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the presentation and the opportunity to ask some questions. I don't quite share the perspectives of the original, or, sorry, the first person asking questions, because I think we should find ways to expand the definition and to ensure it's enforceable, obviously. If we're expanding the definition, the reason is, is any violence in any way to sort of taper and diminish and eliminate violence. I mean, best way we can do this is through this process. I, as an MLA, have experienced constituents come forward about family members of former partners sitting there to stare at them, not stalking, but sitting there in their place of work to stare at them and rotating family members through. And so where I'm driving this point is, is that sometimes it's not an easy definition to capture, but I'm glad to see the legislation is taking a, we'll call it a turn for responsiveness in a positive way as far as I'm concerned. The only worry I have here is, and no disrespect, I don't think stalking is defined enough, and I don't think the elaboration is taking the next step forward. I would like to see, honestly, some thought from the minister, including the Assistant Deputy Minister, which is things like, you know, how do we define intimidation in this particular case? You're expanding stalking to reflect family members of the former partner, or whatever the case may be. But that said, you know, the threshold of defining harassment and intimidation. And let me be specific as I sort of circle back in where I'm getting at this. The perception created is by those who are potentially the victim in the situation. So in a restaurant case where the victim is a restaurant employee, but they have a rotation of family members sitting there from time to time, staring at them, not harassing them, not saying anything to them, not doing anything to them, but sitting there and staring. You know, I feel that this is the opportunity to change the narrative, and where a person is feeling this incredible discomfort, you know, in their place of work, now is the opportunity. Is there any way to sort of, sort of shift or pivot to look at those types of concerns, Minister? Because I would hate to think that, knowing this has happened, that people are victims of some terrible situations, but it's not a violent situation, it's more a situation of not directly stalking, but intimidation, harassment, and the direct perception and being able to say, hey, I can't take this anymore. And who do they go to? And it's that type of expansion. I think it's a good step so far. I'd just like to take it, see it take that little extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to MLA Hawkins for the question. I think that certainly as we, you know, as we look at this type of legislation and the changes, I mean, our society's evolving at such a pace right now, it's a really interesting example that you've provided. I was not involved in the intimate detail, this level of detail in the analysis, but I'm certainly happy to pass it over to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer to provide a little bit more detail. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I was just glancing at, as MLA Hawkins was making note of the situation that he experienced, or one of his constituents experienced, looking at the definition of stalking, as the bill points out. And it does contemplate stalking means conduct that causes a person, you know, to fear for their safety. And I think in those types of circumstances, it's a subjective test, and the court could recognize that this particular person in those particular circumstances could indeed fear for their safety. So it is a, it is a broad definition, but it will take into account how a person is feeling and how the circumstances surrounding them will make them feel. So I think it is plausible that a court could find in those circumstances that it does indeed constitute stalking for the purposes of this bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the Assistant Deputy Minister's answer, but, you know, there's always a different side. I don't think it's strong enough, and I don't, I think it's the old, it's too broad, you can drive a truck through it, because making someone feel uncomfortable in the workplace may not be a question of personal safety. In other words, someone staring at me down, I'm not thinking they're gonna hit me, but at the same token, if someone's staring me down, causes my idiosyncrasies of life. In other words, my breathing changes, you know, how I feel about myself changes, how I move and do my job, or even feel as a human being. That's what I'm talking about, about the intimidation factor, about the opportunity here now to shift or pivot to something more stronger, or to take something clearer in the sense of a definition that's clearer, allows more of a broader response. And I know what he said, and I agree what you said about saying, could it be interpreted as violence or potential violence? I thank you for that sort of redefinition. I agree. But not all intimidation leads to violence. You know, it could just be the glares, the stares, and the repeated, and I have, I have personal experience as a constituent's gone through this, there was no legal remedy. And I don't want to sound, I don't, I may be getting excited on this, because it was very upsetting for me, knowing that there was no legal remedy. So we're asking people who have low to modest income to now turn this into a court solution, which then, you know, find a lawyer, good luck, find the expenses when you're in the, you know, Find the expenses when you're in the, you know, when you're in these situations. These opportunities of an EPO provide a human response in a timely response. And it can be revisited in a normal process due to natural justice to law. And it's the intimidation and the harassment that is difficult to prove and difficult to sort out and difficult to justify in front of a court. And the court has to take every respect of every measure reasonably. I know that, you know that, everyone knows that. But an EPO would really provide the individual protection when someone is feeling intimidated or harassed. And certainly the perception of they're living under that great cloud without an upward uttered or a direct threat uttered. Thank you. And that's, and that's the pivot I'm looking for. I like what you've done so far, I want to make that clear. I just feel we need to take that little step further. Because that is the emotional trauma someone could be carrying day in, day out and forever, knowing that these people are staring at them, not under the formal definition of stalking, or the formal definition of some type of violence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't really hear a specific question in there, but I think I'll pass it to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer for a response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the members' concerns, and I just wanted to highlight some of the examples in the bill of stalking. And the new proposed section two sub four do include conduct that includes besetting or watching any place where the person or anyone known to the person resides, works, or carries on business, or they happen to be. So it does include, you know, somebody just observing, or as the example provided, having a series of people observe the person at their, at their place of work. And could constitute stalking for the purpose of that particular situation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I do have a question too as well. I know that living in small communities, and many of our indigenous government and service providers are always talking about ending violence. We all want to end violence. But, and I know that many of our constituents, many of our people are moving to larger regional center for a better life, for a better program and services, educations. But lately, we have been hearing from many of our constituents that it's, it's not the adult, but it's the school violence that's happening. The school violence and, and many of this, there's a lot of stalking. And, but it happens after school hour too. It happens in school and it happens after school hours as well. We know that there's a lot of stalking, intimidations, and, you know. So I just want to know, because, I mean, this is happening at the school. It's not just happening at the, at home. So how can we use, and I know this stalking is probably just related to family violence. And I do agree with what Mr. Hawkins said about defining the stalking, you know. It's not, there's no clear definition of that. So how can we, in order to protect the young people, and especially violence that's happening at the school? What can we do to help them? Can we use, can, will this toward of stalking apply to them? Thank you. Minister, Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'll pass the question to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the example that you provided, it is possible that this piece of legislation that is specifically tailored to respond to family violence in particular, not necessarily all types of circumstances where violence occurs. So in the example you provided, it could be that the schoolchildren in question are not family members. And so one of the things that we had to pay attention to was the scope of this legislation. And the amendments that we were, we were pursuing were to not necessarily take an expansive approach to stalking in general, but primarily within the family, as that term is used in the most expansive manner these days. So to answer your question, I guess, no, this legislation would not necessarily be a tool that could be used by, by parents in a schoolyard situation where there's bullying or stalking happening in that circumstance. This piece of legislation is targeted at family and family violence in particular. Thank you.
Well, that is a bit disappointing if it's not going to be used. Because, and here we've been advocating to end the violence, and we're condoning it. And I, that does not sit well with me. And I'm sure some of my constituents who moved to Yonley, especially in Yonley, you know, we know there's a lot of problems. And even when they try to do EPO and that, you know, they can, the law is not on their side. So, and, you know, and there's two communities that we don't have EPO that can, or that, we don't have a police stations, gamete and wicote. So any EPO's related status. And, and I'm glad Mr. Mla Testa had mentioned that. But for example, in gamete and wicote, is there a person or an organization that they can call regarding EPOs if it ever arises? Thank you. Mr. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, I will pass to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In those circumstances, the regular processes would apply in terms of applying for an EPO. In, in the circumstance where there isn't necessarily a familial relationship that, that is at play, that wouldn't attract the application of the Protection Against Family Violence Act. There are the other remedies under the Criminal Code that might be available, including, we heard the term restraining orders and peace bonds. Those are tools that exist under the Criminal Code for violence that exists outside of the family unit. And those tools may be available in other circumstances. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Minister of Justice. I will go to Mr. Neersu, Mla Neersu. Please go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for your presentation. The, all, the whole territory suffers from family violence, whether it's a couple itself, or the children, or even the elders within our communities. And it's, it's very important that we address these, address these issues, trying to protect our residents of the Northwest Territories. My question is around elders residing with family members who, you know, most, all of these violences are alcohol or drug-related. High percentage of them. And these elders, I know for fact that some of these elders are staying with their children who engage in alcohol or drug-related issues. So when these violence between these partners come up, the elders is often right in the middle of it. They can't do very much because the high rise of Alzheimer's and dementia is all prevalent within our communities, and it is within my community. And I know of an elder who walks around three, four o'clock in the morning just for the fact to get out of the residence. Because violence is occurring and he has no place to go. How is this bill protecting the elder in this circumstance? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just wanted to thank Mla Neersu for that comment. I think it's very prevalent, the, you know, stress that is put on our elders all across the NWT and the amount of, of challenge there is in some of the situations. So certainly can appreciate that point of view. I would pass to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer for a response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, this is one of the situations that the amendments to the act are, are looking at in terms of expanding the definition of, of family to include those situations where there is an element of care that's, that exists between elders and others who may be living in the household. In section two, the term care relationship is a definition that has been added. And it is defined as a person who is dependent on another person for assistance in their daily life activities because of disability, illness, aging, or impairment. And it, it includes the ability for somebody who is within the care of the household to, to bring an application for protection under this, under this particular bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Neersu, Mla Neersu, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just more of a comment that is, once again, you know, I'm very concerned about our elders within the whole of the Northwest Territories finding protection for them. And, you know, our elders are suffering because they, they live on a fixed income. And, or with the high rise of alcohol, especially drugs. Our elders are targeted constantly, every day. Because, you know, these, we find that these people need their, need their source of money to, to get their alcohol and or drugs. And the first persons that are really targeted are elders, I see it constantly. We have two outlet stores here in Fort McPherson, and then the co-op, there's people, young people sitting around the co-op waiting to prey on someone. To ask them, you know, can you help us out? And it's usually, it's usually the elders. They're not protected, so, you know, financial, it's a financial burden on them. So elder abuse is very big, and I'd like to see, you know, this expanded where elders are put in the forefront and really protected. Because these are the ones that are, like, mental health will kick in eventually with them because they wouldn't want to, they'd be scared even to come out of their house, or even to unlock their door for that matter. So I'd really like to see the elders put in the forefront of this bill, or maybe even strengthen, more of a comment than anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Minister of Justice, do you want a comment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, you know, I'll just once again reiterate what I said earlier, and I, I totally agree with Mla Neersu. I think it's important, you know, the, the level of elder abuse that we see all across the territory is certainly, you know, disturbing. And I think it is certainly an area that, that needs, needs attention, and we need to continue to, to focus on that as we are, you know, constantly struggling, you know, with the drugs and the alcohol in all of our communities. So thank you for the comment, and I, I certainly agree with the point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Minister of Justice. Now, we, we do have time for a second set of questions, so I will start with Mla Morgan.
Is this not a public hearing? Do people in the public get to say anything?
Yes, you will, after. Yeah.
I sent a submission and asked that it be read confidentially, but I didn't get a response back. I'm down to 10% on my phone, and I have to go to a doctor's appointment soon. So is it possible?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, our clerk, I guess we can talk to her. Okay.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I certainly want to acknowledge, like, it is such a large problem that we're facing around family violence in the Territory. And I think, you know, having read through, for example, YWCA helped sponsor or released a report in 2020. Talking about emergency protection orders and how effective they are, and some of the nuances. And I really appreciated reading through that to also just better understand that a lot of these situations where people are actually really complicated. And it would be nice if it was just an easy solution that if you're experiencing family violence, you get an EPO. And then that person stays far away forever, and everything is fixed, and everybody moves on with their lives. But often, it doesn't work out that easily. And there's a lot of cases of people coming back and wanting to change the order or cancel the order. Because even though it can be done really quickly, the danger is that a lot of the complications in people's lives aren't thought through, and you have to come back afterwards. And it's a lot harder to come back afterwards and try to change the order or cancel it or get a new one. But, for example, not thinking through, okay, we made this rule that this person, you know, that creates boundaries around where this person's allowed to be, or, but actually that's preventing them from getting to their place of work. Or actually now they're being prevented from seeing their children or family members, and they're not actually in danger, and we didn't mean to do that, but it had the effect of doing that. And, or often, the person who made the application in the first place realizes that, or sometimes they even break the order themselves, coming back. And, you know, maybe they need help from that person, or they want to reconcile with that person, or they're dependent on that person financially. There's a lot of complicated circumstances where, you know, this act and the orders that are contained in it unfortunately aren't the final and magic bullet solution to everything. Not to say that they're not important, they are very important. And especially in specific circumstances where, again, someone is, you know, fearing for their safety, they, they don't have a safe place to live. They're in a sort of coercive day-to-day relationship where they have trouble, you know, escaping from this person. And I guess, I mean, I wanted to ask about some of perhaps the unintended consequences of the act. And one might be that you could actually, I mean, what it allows you to do is remove someone from a home, right? But, and that's making that person homeless. But for example, you might actually make someone homeless who is a minor, they're, they're under 19. But it's possible for people to get, for example, an EPO or a protection order against a youth living in that home. And, but that might result in that person actually being homeless, and, and that is a minor, that's a child. Or it might result in a caregiver for children being removed for that, from that home with their children. And then again, the children have nowhere to live and they become homeless. And so I'm wondering if the department has considered whether it's possible to include in legislation some way to ensure that no child, no minor, should become homeless? Due to, to the issuance of an emergency protection order? Or to, you know, understand some of the nuances better and dangers or pitfalls of how these kinds of orders can be used. So, I mean, I guess I'll use that example. Is there a way, like, currently, I don't believe, but maybe correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no age limit on the person that you're trying to get the emergency protection order against? But can the department explain how they may have thought through this problem of, you know, protection orders making children homeless, essentially? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Minister of Justice?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'll speak broadly to, to the comment, and then I'll pass it off to, to Assistant Deputy Minister for some of the detail. But I think, you know, the, the intent here was to modernize an already existing piece of legislation. You know, so the, the EPO was already in place prior to us doing the modernization. And I think, you know, there, there are unintended consequences at times. You know, I'm familiar with some of instances where, where those may have happened, where people have, you know, changed their mind, you know, after the fact. But I think the, the focus from, from my perspective that we need to think about here is, in the moment, you know, this is a tool that provides safety to, to families, to elders, to children, to husbands, to wives, to aunts, to uncles. You know, it's a tool that's used to, to address a situation that's happening now. And I think that that, you know, our ability to expand and modernize the legislation to reflect our changing world is an important one. But that was pretty high level. But I will pass it to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer for a more detailed response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I'd add to the minister's response is that there is a review provision within the existing legislation that does allow an applicant or respondent who's subject to an order in situations where there are those unintended consequences perhaps that weren't realized when the order was first issued, that those could be brought before the reviewing court, and the order could be tailored to, to perhaps minimize some of the unintended consequences. As for the MLA's question regarding whether there was any consideration of, of providing an age limit within the legislation to which an order could apply, I believe that was outside of the scope of the amendments that the department was looking at in terms of expanding the concept of, of the family and, and, and what the nature of family meant in terms of the application of, of the legislation. I don't know whether Ms. Pulo has any other information to add to this first of all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Pulo?
Madam Chair, there was, in our engagement, we did ask about the possibility of following Nunavut's example of allowing, I think it was up to 14-year-olds to be able to be respondent. Or, but we didn't hear back applicants or respondents, so that was included in the engagement. But there had been no, no feedback, and so it wasn't in, in the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, MLA Morgan, because we do have visitor in, in a Yes, I would like to do that. Okay, okay, thank you. I would like, no, I would like to go to Okay, okay, I would like to go to members of public. If, if you have any questions, please ask, no? Or regarding Bill 27? Oh, okay, about comments? Okay, please proceed. Introduce yourself first, yeah. Uh, just wait, wait.
Bonjour, Danatei. For my introduction, I can only provide the facts that I am a surviving victim of domestic violence. And because my children are still under the age of majority, but to identify myself would be identifying my children. So to protect them, I cannot say their names, nor my name. But I need to let this party know that in more than one submission made by me via email and conversations with government over the course of quite a few years, up to six years and up to the present day, I have outlined my struggles with the EPO application process and the shortfalls that exist within it. I know that all genders can experience domestic violence, but I reference women as the victims because statistical data shows that they are the vast majority of the victims. I thank you for allowing my voice to be heard through Bill 27 and by attempting to expand who can apply for EPOs. This bill would help address some of the issues that I had when applying. When I first applied for an EPO, I was simply in a dating relationship. I did not live with my offender, offender, nor did I have children with him at the time. I stayed at the local shelter in Yellknife and applied for an EPO but was declined. I made approximately 20 calls to the RCMP in regards to his violence and threats on my life, but the threshold was too high to charge him as his violence towards me was done in environments where it was only my word against his. I was not informed of the option of peace bonds at the time, and instead was told that I would qualify for an EPO only if I was married to him, lived with him, or had a child with him. I lived in a place where he could only live with me if he was my husband. So I married him, and the person who married us was a lawyer working for the government. Immediately after marrying him, I returned to the same shelter who had just declined me only weeks before for my EPO to apply again. And this time, now that I was married to him, I met those application requirements and was granted the EPO. Shortly after receiving the EPO, I briefly left that shelter on the advice of a shelter staff member to go to my home to retrieve my son's AMSL soccer uniform so he could attend soccer. And unknown to me at the time, my new husband had smashed through the back window and was waiting for me inside. He strangled me while I was unconscious in front of my children and beat me while I was still unconscious and when I was in the beginning stages of a pregnancy with his child. My then-seven-year-old son saved my life by smashing a picture frame over his head and was given an Aboriginal policing pin in confidence for saving his mom's life, my life. My ex-husband's breach of this EPO meant that he could finally go to jail and that the legal threshold was now finally met. The violence escalated over the years because I experienced a hidden type of discrimination towards women experiencing violence, which makes it difficult to obtain a source of income to leave. Employers do not want to hire women with violent husbands because it places their customers and clients at risk of the husband's violent behaviors. The ability to leave is also difficult with the housing crisis and other societal factors. Leases can be terminated because of domestic violence, but women experiencing this are not legally entitled to transfer to a safer unit. And I know this because I experienced this issue in court. So I have stuck with my abuser, and he continued to try to kill me. Axes to the head, saws to my neck, and in the end, he brutally stabbed me multiple times while pregnant and was aiming for locations with main arteries. He was deported, and I would have never, ever married him or lived with him if I simply had the option to apply for an EPO based on us dating alone. But the current EPO without this bill does not allow that, so making these changes may save someone's life. However, I want to remind the abused victims that violence escalates over time, that pregnant women are often the targets due to their vulnerability, and most importantly, that an EPO is simply a piece of paper and does not always deter an extremely violent person. And even more important is to leave as soon as you can and never tell your perpetrator when you're planning to leave because this often triggers extreme acts of violence and can lead and has led to homicides. So I would like to tell them to break their silence about the violence, but to stay silent about any plans to leave. And I did not mention anything in regards to minor children, but I wanted to because I've seen EPOs being issued against minor children, and I'm aware that they do become homeless when that happens. I'm aware that the Child and Family Services Law Act stipulates that if a child under 12 commits murder, that they immediately move into the Child and Family Services Law Act. And I think you guys need to be understanding of the fact that, that I have personally witnessed in the area that I live in, which is the housing complex of the Northwest Territories, that there is many acts of violence that are quite extreme, happening from minors towards elders almost to near death for those elders. And to the mothers as well, for children who have witnessed this violence in their lives. So I think that to add an age limit would be very dangerous for other people. And there are things in place, like Homebase, that does not allow children to become homeless anymore. And there are stipulations in the Child and Family Services Act that, that allow a child under the age of 12, if they were to commit a homicide, to be, to be moved into the care of social services. I think maybe there should be a better, maybe looking more at the fact of the ages above 12, 13 and older, and possibly realizing the fact that Homebase does still put them in what they call day homelessness from the hours of noon to eight. They are still homeless in the day. They have the choice of going to the youth shelter. The youth shelter does not open when they're in school. And oftentimes, these same kids, if they're committing those sorts of crimes, are often not going to be in school either, and I know that from being a school teacher. So I would suggest that that age would be the age that if you're going to be looking at it, that that age should be targeted, and that the reliance needs to be placed on another government agency to ensure that there are not homeless. But it should not block elders or parents from getting EPOs if the child is extremely dangerous. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more questions, we would like to conclude this public briefing unless, okay. Any comments regarding Bill 27?
I'm being encouraged to come forward. My name is Margaret Niguel. I am a family law lawyer working in Yellknife. I've been working here for about 30 years. I just wanted to draw to the committee's attention that I have prepared some written submissions that do, or have been reviewed by other family law lawyers and contain a series of suggestions about issues that we've identified with the legislation. We attempt to recognize that this is a very serious social problem in the Northwest Territories, that that this legislation may have its limitations. And the efforts that the committee is being asked to consider in expanding some of the ways in which this legislation works may require some further discussions. And it may be, in fact, that trying to protect elders in this legislation may be the wrong tool, but recognizing that elders are in need of protection and recognizing that there can be and should be a greater awareness of the other tools that already exist. We're certainly very concerned about how expanding the legislation as it has been could actually reduce the already problematic use of this legislation. And a lot of benefit could come from increased training rather than changes to the legislation. But I do encourage the committee to review the written submissions. They do have much more specific suggestions about the legislation itself. And ultimately, trying to understand whether this legislation can do what it's designed to do is the first question. And then, secondly, can it actually improve? Or can we find ways to improve the situation for others in the Northwest Territories?
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Yes. Okay, that's, okay, okay, MLA Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand how this legislation, or these tools of EPOs and, and protection orders relate to, like, at what point is like a criminal charge a more, a more effective, like, step? Or what, what needs to be done? I mean, we've talked about you know, severe acts of, of violence. And, I mean, all acts of violence need to be addressed. And I understand the value of emergency protection orders as a tool to, like, immediately protect someone. But, for example, in the, in the bill, with regard to stalking, it adds a section that allows the RCMP to tell someone if the RCMP reasonably believes that that person is being stalked, and they know the name of that person, so they tell the name of the person who is, they think is the stalker. But I'm confused in that scenario of why, if the RCMP has investigated and has come to the conclusion that they believe someone is stalking someone else, why wouldn't the RCMP at that point lay charges? Like, why, why would the next step be then they would pass on the information to the person being stalked? And, you know, good luck. Like, I don't understand why that's the logical remedy in this legislation as opposed to the RCMP actually charging someone? Like, protection orders, you know, place that onus on the person who is subject of that act of violence to, you know, go and get that protection order. And then the RCMP is supposed to, but doesn't always have the resources to actually enforce it. But at what point is the solution, like, actually, the RCMP laying charges against that person and not putting the onus back on the victim to be the one to apply for a protection order? Can you explain it, and specifically with regard to that clause of the Act, why that makes sense? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, MLA Morgan. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll pass to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can't speak for the RCMP in terms of when they would consider laying a charge versus using the tools under the, this particular bill. But one of the things I can note is that, you know, a lot of the criminal code offenses do carry with them a higher standard of proof than what exists under other legislation in terms of the balance of probabilities versus the, the higher standard that's, that's must be adhered to under the, under the criminal code. And that could be one of the reasons why this tool might be preferred in certain circumstances. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Now, I'll go to MLA Nurseu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, you know, when alcohol or drugs are related, the higher risk of danger to family members is very high. And then, after a while, after the risk has diminished, the victim, you know, the victim, whether it's the male or the female, is usually the female. More than likely, drop the protection order or their charges just through intimidation or otherwise. You know, it's a waste of resources. It's wasting the court's time, the RCMP, the Health Department. How can the authorities play a, play a different role to ensure the safety of all family members, making sure that these criminal charges, acts are dealt with, are indeed carried through to the end, to end family violence? So we've, I've seen this numerous times. You go to a courtroom and they're dealing with family violence, and then they, they call up, the RCMP called the victim, and the victim is not there because she doesn't want to see, he or she doesn't want to see their partner go to, go to jail or otherwise, and are let go, and this cycle continues. How will this bill be used to ensure that these, these acts of these acts of violence are carried through to the end in the court system? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, M.L.A. Nurse. Minister of Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, maybe once again, I would just say, I think that, you know, the focus of the EPO is really that tool in the heat of the moment. You know, and I think there's, excuse me, a lot of, it's a very complex issue, I guess, you know, family violence is very complex, and there are a lot of factors that contribute. And there's a lot of tools from many different angles, not just from the justice system, that are used to support and to try and resolve this situation. So just wanted to make that comment, but I'm happy to pass to Assistant Deputy Minister Patzer for any details he'd like to add. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patzer?
You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Minister. Not much else to respond, other than to note that the emergency protection orders are there for just that, emergencies. And there are other tools that are available that, you know, in a particular circumstances, there might be a police investigation, and charges might arise if there has been violence in the family context. But these particular orders are there for the emergency circumstance and to acquire on very short notice. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nurse, do you have a follow-up question?
Oh, good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I would like to conclude the public briefing on Bill 27. This concludes our public briefing for Bill 27, so since there's no more questions, our next, the deadline for written submission for Bill 27 is Friday, August 29. So please send your comments to committee@ntassembly.ca. So, thank you. So this concludes the public portion of this afternoon. Thank you.